Requested two samples only, the floodgates that they had put in their house that they raised it and all that. So when we, if, if and when we get moved, it's a little space to put, you know, a display of all this stuff that they could, because right now we don't have room, but that beam was very big on that. And when they come do their audits, that's stuff that they check.
You could probably give one of them like a magazine rack and put right outside your door.
Exactly. So when they do their, the state does their audits and FEMA does it, that's, that's a part of what they look at is that you're educating the public on what resources are available to them if something happens, so.
I think that's an excellent idea.
We've got a little start here. We've got a couple of beds and all that kind of stuff, but, so.
Well, with a, with a room that large, I mean, I don't care, and then our, these gentlemen can tell you if they care or not, but I don't care. How do you arrange it between you and the surveyor's office and who, who gets the window space and who doesn't, and I don't, I don't care that. I just think it's, I think your offices are very compatible to each other, and I think there's room in there for each of you and your staff, one each of you have. And displays, I, I wouldn't see anything wrong with even if you want to put a display out in the rotunda. Especially from time to time.
Especially area of plan, and we have somebody there wanting to move it forward and make it better.
Yeah. I don't see a problem with it.
I'm making a motion to approve your moving. Trouble you got to change, or?
No, no, I just kinda like to be part of all this, so I'd kinda love to investigate this a little bit further. Because I just wanted to put enough room for both of you in that space. I'd say that's the next step. I mean, it would triple the amount that we have now, and we'll make a missed part, so I. At, at the end of the day, it, it's for the people that come in and have to go back down and see Donnie and A and P, and then they have to come back down. So that would be, as far as our stuff, we have some filing cabinets with all the flood stuff. And, and I could keep my stuff minimal, but obviously Donnie has a lot of cabinets.
Most of them with their big maps and everything.
Yeah, so we, we would accommodate, you know, that, but the beam down there for four meccas or a system.
What was shooting?
I, I think it'd be funny if you split that room in half. It's still three times greater than what we're working at, so. And we'll, we'll make work whatever we got. Donnie's office is gonna have a lot of printers and all that, so we'll work, yeah, we'll, we'll work something out. He's, he's got priorities. He's been here a lot longer than I have. I'm the new man, so I'll, we'll figure that out. They, they ultimately, when they come to our office, have to deal with Donnie for house permits and for other things, so that'd be.
So that happens. They have to run up and down, then they, they still have to come to your office, it's only just one trip.
You might run us by Donnie, because I'm gonna be bothering him a lot more right now, where I'm on.
But you have, you have a courthouse, it's, it's a problem.
Sure, yeah, I went to Peru and a couple others that are all right next to each other, across the hall. Even Tennessee, Tennessee.
Would you like to vote for both then for?
Well, if they think it's gonna work, I don't really have a problem with that.
Issues with community correction.
Well, I don't want you to base it, just on, I mean, I have you reached out to the other, uh, directors or other departments. I don't want it just because it's what I want. I want it to be what works best for the entire courthouse, so I don't want.
Well, you need more room than what you, you know, your total community care.
I just wanted to accommodate the, the entire courthouse, not just.
Well, you and Warren brought up a, I think, a very good point is that, I asked Steve the last time for a two-week stand here to think about it, and this is the plan I came up with, but. I have not talked to, uh, we have a request from, say, the bedroom's office for larger space, but I haven't gone to him and said, hey, would you like to have that? Will that work for you? So maybe we should take time to go to each, I don't know. Do we, do we need to? I mean, that.
It's our, it's Mr.'s courthouse, so we must be able to make, do what's gonna be best for them, and it seems like that would be the best move at this time.
Yes.
Only one concern I have is that I have families that would be outside of ours that would need to be in here if I need to meet with them.
You'll have a key to the courthouse. If you get an office, you'll have a key to the courthouse.
And you don't care that they have their, here at, outside.
You'll be with them.
I didn't quite.
She was worried about coming back.
I still have my hearing aids in the box. See, I didn't quite hear you here, so.
Her concern though was that when, after hours, if she has to talk to the family of the deceased that she takes care of. So if she'd be all right coming in with them without anybody else here.
You see that as a problem? Wouldn't that be better than down in the basement?
I just, no, I, I have a problem here yet. I just know, like, the potential is there. Like, yesterday we were flooded with three at the same time, so I mean, you're talking like even weekends whenever that it could possibly come up, so. I just wanna make sure that's okay.
Well, that's another, another issue we need to talk about when she comes up.
Well, you need to talk to the recorder. I brought that up a couple of times. See, they have the second room in his office, so she needs to be approached too.
Yeah, but I, I'm not, talk is, I'm taking that away. You don't, from them, the only thing would be access during the time you do an interrogation.
Okay.
Not like we're gonna take everything out of there.
Well, I understand, but that's partly what people like to have, that rooms, because teams have. I thought you were giving it all to them, so.
I really like the idea of, we don't have our messy here, I really like the idea of that room, which is the sheriff's office being. That because it has the virtually secret door out the back where they can bring witnesses and things in and out, in and about us. Inconspicuous in a manner is what you could possibly get if coming up or. One time I was given a tour to fifth graders of this building, and a little kid says, oh, this is the secret stairway. You know, you know, back in, and I thought, well, you know, you're not too far off. It is kind of, it's the only one that's. It's a stairway that is not open to everybody to see.
Stairway.
It used to be the assessor's office too.
What?
It used to be the assessor's office too.
The assessor was in that little bitty office? I didn't do that.
The little ceiling.
What did they do down where the assessor is?
The welfare department was there.
Didn't that sound?
Well, I'll retract on those, if anyone would like to meet, so everybody has a chance to talk to everybody.
Impressed with this for a year.
If you get this moving, how long's that gonna take?
Right, well, there's gonna be a little cost on it, because you have to switch phones and stuff like that. I don't know if that returns us to do that or not.
They'll probably cost everyone a big thing, yeah. Computer terminals will all happen, you know?
Right, you just.
Okay, so we'll, what we will do is, is talk to every office and bring it to a, a final vote next week.
Okay, very good, great. Thank you.
Uh, we're ready to move on down, and we'll raise the judge's mouth back here.
I don't know about Grace.
Well, I think so.
I'm here for community corrections. We have a couple of things Beth can make sure I don't forget anything. We've got some job descriptions that we need to get approved.
You have those in front of you.
Those went to her, can't her on repeat?
Those are for me.
And then, has the council had a?
Your first. Well, actually, the department head is first, and he said he would, he was agreeable to.
What's the morning one?
He was agreeable to the secretary, and he would agree to whatever Kent Erwin put in the second one.
I just said I would, finally, I just came. It became so much bureaucratic red tape that I just said, whatever, so.
I looked at things before the meeting. I'm making a motion to approve that job description as a result.
I, uh, looked at briefly for some of the, I'd like to promote.
Comment in the back.
You got a comment?
I have an issue with this. The council does not allow me to incorporate two positions into one, and we were talking about part-time. And I feel like, how is the probation department going to do a full-time job? With the community corrections? I had some dealings with community corrections before Kena left, and I thought was doing a wonderful job. And I think it takes a certain mindset, and I'm not sure that the probation department is, that those people have the right mindset to work with the individuals that need the help, that should be getting the help from community corrections. And I don't feel like you should be able to put a full-time job in with another full-time job when they wouldn't allow me to do a part-time job. We're talking about, we were talking twenty-five hundred dollars, and now you're talking twenty thousand dollars. So I, I disagree.
I think we're trying to compare apples and oranges of this one, though.
No, I don't think so, Steve.
It's still the, still the same, I mean, whoever this person is capable of doing.
But how is he going to do the job that he's been doing full-time and take on another full-time job? That was the, one of the issues that you guys, you know, that they wouldn't let me because of the, you know, how are they doing their job? They're gonna be adding all this other work to it.
I remember that. I think, Judge, if you would, for the benefit of everybody here, me, and for the viewing public here that'll be watching on Debbie's channel. Explain what this is all about, Judge. Explain that to us.
So, so the, the previous community corrections director was a therapist and a demonstrator. And so she had two jobs that she was doing, and the therapist portion of the job was, was far and away the major portion of her workload. And so what we decided to do was to create a new director position for community corrections that stripped away all of the therapist portions and just left basically the administrative things, like applying for the grant annually and things like that. So we changed fundamentally the position of community corrections director. The other thing that this allows us to do is, is, you know, the previous community corrections director made sixty thousand dollars. And so our, as we've proposed it, the person will make twenty thousand. And so that leaves us additional forty thousand dollars to do things, to help people in the community that need it. It's the intention of the board to use some of that savings along with the money that we received from the state for the opioid grant to enter into agreements with therapists in the private market to provide the component that was previously being provided by our employee. That also, there, there was some, I don't want to get too deep into the weeds, but there was some difficulty, you know, the, how wind is hip, a kick, kick in, and things like that. And so I think it's better to have that separation between the therapist and the department, and that was the, that was the thinking of the board. As far as the, um, there, there is a widely circulated misconception that somehow community corrections is sort of designed to be the kinder and gentler probation department. It's not the case. Community corrections is actually designed to supervise the, the highest-risk offenders that, that exist, and so it, it's a, it's a supplement to probation. It is a supplement for the people that need the most services and the most supervision. It's not designed as some sort of a more lenient version of probation, which I think is. And, and I, I just think that's been a widely held misconception.
Misconception.
Yeah, it's, it's not meant to sort of be the kinder and gentler probation department. It's, it's, it's a supplement to community supervision. So we feel like this is a good, strong way to do this. I'll be, I mean, I don't know if you want me to get into the rest of the things here, but the other things that I've been talking to you about is the joint secretary, which allows the county then to save half of the salary of the probation secretary and have that to come into the, the grant as well, which provides our local taxpayers with some savings. Then also, I'm gonna be asking that you build me a wall upstairs. If you can get Mexico to pay for it, that's great, but I should ask you to pay for it, and that will wall off that section next to the probation secretary. I've already talked to Circuit Court. They're the ones that are using it, basically. I think they've got a microwave in there or something, and a file cabinet or two. That will, will allow us to move out of the lounge and free that up for the county. I've got Taylor Gibbons here, by the way, who is our new case manager that we've hired, and I think this is his first day, so I just grabbed him by the nape and then dragged him down here.
I'm sorry, Judge, he's your boy.
He's the, he's the case manager. So Sammy, Sammy's previous position, we just filled that. And so Taylor Gibbons, like Rayland Gibbons, I assume.
Okay.
It's a good show.
Are you confident adding a workload to your director and the secretary?
Yes, and if he feels like he can handle it at some point, he'll let us know. I mean, he'll say, his, Mr. Gibbons is going to be taking over the lion's share of the work, the day-to-day work. At least that's our anticipation. And Mr. Shagley's contribution is going to be dealing with the Department of Correction to make sure the grant is right and budgeting and things like that. But it does take twenty thousand dollars worth of work, but I feel like Mr. Shagley can handle it. And again, if it turns out that he feels like he can, he'll let us know, and we'll come up with another, another plan.
So I'm just wondering if you think your statement might come out in?
Well, I, I, what does the probation secretary make, ballpark? It's over thirty. Isn't it? Or right under thirty, so half of the fifteen plus forty, fifty-five thousand, right there, plus you get your lounge back.
How's that, what's going to be, that we handle easily?
Well, I, we anticipate that's the case, but if not, we'll make adjustments as necessary.
There was some talk about the museum of the community.
That's such a, yeah, we went down there and looked. That is such a, that would be such an undertaking. I mean, HVAC, it, it, it would be. It would be, plus it would be a shame, frankly, to, I mean, that.
Shameless, huh?
Well, it's a shame to let it set, but I mean, you know.
Destroy it that way.
Right, I don't know.
Either, either what we do to down there, we have to do all that, what you're talking about.
Well, unless you just give it a coat of paint and have meetings in here. You'd have poetry reading.
I'm afraid of basketball and all.
We could put a basketball and all, shoot free throws. So at any rate, this is, this space will be fine for the foreseeable future. Obviously, it's gonna cost a lot less with one wall and put a door in, move a few phone lines, which I actually do that, too. Then to build out all that space down there, however much you can possibly.
I think we had money to put back to when we had best boost. Then we had money to put aside.
Yeah, at one point, it was like a hundred thousand. If you build that wall for a hundred thousand, that'd be a solid little wall.
Well, I'm talking about the, the museum, the only reason, I'm, the reason why I'm big about the museum is to keep everybody just coming in and out with one door all the time. So having them go through the courthouse.
The other good thing about, you know, and whether that was in the museum or upstairs, it's important. These two departments have essentially the same mission, and so it's important that they have the ability to share information back and forth with one another. So having them right there in the same place is, is absolutely the right thing to do. And there may also be some economies that will, you know, drug testing supplies and things like that. We may get in some other opportunities to, to project some savings to the county in terms of shared effort beyond just the, the secretary. I mean, for example, like the copy machine and things like that. There's, there's no reason to have another copy machine.
Hey, you have another comment?
Hey, if he decides that the workload is too much and that he can't do it, is that twenty thousand dollars going to be taken away from him if you're changing the job description?
Yeah, I mean, if, if Mr. Shagley decides he wants to go back to just being the regular probation officer, then I don't know what we do.
We have checked with Kent Erwin, and that was one of the points that we brought up last time, is that if it does not work out on a probation officer, you cannot take that money away.
Well.
And also, the other thing we would need is a amended budget order for the approval of using that grant the way you want to use it, and we have not received that, and, but you said.
But we'll get that.
We are getting it.
Yeah, if we can just get the job descriptions approved, we'll get that, and I'll, I'll follow Kent Erwin on that probation officer.
It's not a, a salary thing.
And, yeah.
That's what we were told.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay, since he's talking about saving money, I was told that the probation department itself can apply for grant, I mean, if they do the paperwork to the state, they can get money back for those positions that are upstairs, and I don't know that that's ever been done. Do you know if that's true?
There, there are certain grants, but we're not, we've got the community corrections.
I mean, right now we have zero, well, we have now one.
I was told that it was.
Yesterday we had zero employees, now we have one. We need to, getting these administrative things done is really difficult.
You guys getting separated the way it was, and there wasn't much communications, and it was kind of a foul, I remember sitting on that board when it first came on.
Yeah.
And we had issues there, I believe.
There's no reason for them to have issues. They should, they should be on the same team all the way.
They put it together and, put these together, save some money for the county and on the grant. They can use that towards helping the individuals that need the help. I mean, almost fifty-five thousand dollars, that's a lot of money to help an individual. So that's what the grant is basically for. The wall, I can carelessly put a wall up there.
Well, you guys have to pay for it, by the way. We can't pay for that out of our grant, just so you know.
You should have money in, in.
Yeah, we can't do capital.
And I think our new guys, you have, Mr. Freeman, pretty talented, he might love to do that himself.
That'd be fantastic.
I mean, so we just have the jury. As long as it don't have to be soundproof. You don't need a soundproof or anything like that.
Yeah, we're not gonna have, doesn't need to be like a music studio, but I wouldn't want everybody to hear everything.
Well, if you're doing your treatment outside, which I.
Yeah, the treatment would be, would be off-site.
Because I think that's where you're running into issues.
Yeah, the treatment will be off-site.
I'm still living by motion.
Would you guys agree to do that? Can that extra money, let's be not you being used for the director, be used to build the wall?
No, we can't use it for capital improvement. The grants, it doesn't allow for that.
Yeah, you're looking at the wall, if I remember right, just the one for the room.
Yep. You're there, one door.
Would you restate your motion, would it, motion to approve both job descriptions and for us to build the wall as needed?
Man, there was another clause, it was black phone and.
Yeah, we'll need to get phone and internet lines right in there, too.
Do you have that in your question?
That's capital improvements. We're not allowed to use the state grant to do anything that would sort of be here. Oh, yeah, we can pair on the phone, though.
Will we pair on the phone?
Yeah, we can pair on the phone. I get you.
Okay, so we have a motion.
Well, my concern is the, the job description, that this responsibility is taken on.
Then we have to change the job description back to the original. Maybe I can put that in my motion, if it don't work out, go back to the original job description.
It's fine, it's me.
Right.
Yeah, it's fine, you do. Only the original job description exists, and it's been approved. So, so it would preserve back to an approved job description already.
But also, it can be eliminated by the council, because they're, they've been going through the job descriptions and.
Right, tell them not to, please. Okay.
Well, I'll second your shot, I have my guy, but, but right now we don't have much of anything, so I'm not so sure. I mean, we've been there with community corrections five years now, six.
Been kind of a.
Up and down situation.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think it's time to get it going.
Yeah.
I mean, we really haven't supported them, why not have them spaced for, now we got an area to do it, and we got people willing to do it.
Yeah?
I don't wanna be a thorn, I really don't, but when I pay salary and when I pay bills, it's according to that grant. And I think the motion should be contingent on us getting that new amended grant.
That's fair. So approved, provided that the, that the change is accepted through the grant.
Grant.
Yeah. That the, that the.
So I'll still pay.
I won't pay until it gets.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, you'll also get a regular salary, and then on.
Right, they'll get something for the grant. Yeah, that's right. I think that's reasonable.
No, it would all be in one.
But the source of it would be the grant. I mean, I tried to just do it as a, you know, twenty thousand dollars, just out of the grant, but they didn't like that.
Well, I'm in my motion, will it best then?
All right.
So you're on your motion now, since back to one.
I mean, I've got a jury waiting upstairs.
Is he gonna work thirty-six hours a week or forty hours a week?
Mr. Shagley now works all the time, you know, he gets woken up in the weekend and for juveniles, I, I have no doubt that he will provide the county with the.
Secretary's thirty-six, this says, work schedule is as scheduled.
As scheduled.
So. Depends on.
He's a professional.
Is that an issue for thirty-six or forty hours?
What would that mean? Just that he would, he would accrue comp time? Do you base your comp time on a thirty-six? I assume.
I was told that I no longer.
He no longer gets.
Oh, that, he's exempt.
So it wouldn't even matter.
Does that even matter?
Because I know he's professional, he, there's an issue, I have to be here. I got confidence in our permission.
So we have a motion, and we have a second. We have a motion and a second, and Beth, would you care to read the motion?
It's probably four feet long.
Steve Pearson made a motion to approve both job descriptions as presented and to build a wall in the probation department and provide phone lines and internet upon amended budget being approved and received. That's my short version.
Right.
Sounds pretty rare, I assume. So I call for a vote. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thanks, guys.
Beth and I had spoke recently about our American Tower REIT's contract, and it was set to renew on January twenty-eighth of two. The way the contract reads, which I read last week, it was tied, and the renewals are automatic for four additional terms every five years. So I guess I'm coming to today to see, do you want to continue with the contract, revisit it in the next term? Or what are your wishes? For the length of the contract, we'll be spending over a million dollars on it.
So the alternative is to build their own tower, or?
I mean, that would be an option to look into, yes. Since two thousand thirteen, we've spent almost fourteen thousand dollars in repairs and maintenance on the phone lines out of the tower. I feel if we could fix those phone lines, we would be better off, because the cost of the tower, I think that if we could explore other options. We could potentially save on, I'm not a hundred percent sure yet.
That is our responsibility to maintain all that? I mean, we're leasing the power, aren't they supposed to give us? I don't know what the contract says, but aren't they supposed to give us?
An extra on tower is, is, uh, I don't, I don't, uh, we're leasing space on.
On the power.
Co-location.
Is that, yeah.
It's a co-location situation.
I heard about Prince Lynn.
I'd rather look at it, I, I, I can't, you, you didn't.
Because I think if we're paying them this kind of money, they ought to give us the service we need, and that's the same work.
I've never been involved in a co-location cover agreement, so, uh, new ground.
And how long do we have in the sentence?
Um, our contract renewed on January twenty eighth, twenty twenty.
We're in it for another?
For another five years.
Another five years.
But I, I don't know if there are any clauses in the agreement that if something's not to its standard that we can get, I'm not sure how that reads, so.
I think they'll have to pay for this, and they'll schedule it, and we'll come back and advise it.
Sure, when I read the contract, when I first came on, there was. I think the clause was in there that American Tower does annual maintenance on the tower itself. I haven't, I mean, it's been a while since I read it, but I'd have to look at it again. So any of the component parts, our phone lines. So any of the component parts, our phone lines and all that, I believe are our responsibility. They maintain the tower. And this was brought up, the Harley Tower, right after I came on, about the amount of money that we're spending and going to spend, because the contract ended up being a total of twenty-seven years. On an automatic renewal. So I think we're kinda caught right now, this is, this is my opinion, I think we're caught for this next five years. But if we wanna go a different route and look at constructing our own tower and stuff like that, now we've got time to plan that out and possibly save money to do that. Or we just continually dump money into it. But we will have to get the phone lines, which are probably stepping on their toes on this. We're having some issues with the phone lines on the VHF, so we're probably gonna have to look.
Given my work there, we had issues. You know when we changed stuff, we said that issue.
Right. I've been speaking with Frontier to get those either repaired, new, installed, whatever. Um, I have been working with a lady, but she has since resigned from her position, and they've recently filled it, so I've not had the chance to talk to that person to see where they picked up at and where, what our status is right now.
Just so they can give you the pen.
I think that's first, I've got the contract, I just had to head.
Then what happens if we have a pen step on some toes to make sure we get it repaired the way we need to, if it's on now?
Right.
But this is on, this is the capital, it cannot be, not for our part, or is this?
This is for the tower.
The tower itself, yeah. Well, I'm, I'm in agreement, when I remember reading this contract, I think, uh, I think it has its, it has its space up on top of the tower. All the electronic equipment, everything is ours to maintain. If we were to build a new tower, we need to look at how much that would cost us compared to what we're paying now, and all that, and of course site. Doesn't seem to me like the elevation at the proposed new jail site would be that much different than Harley Tower. So we would probably get about the same coverage area. For the, then if you, Harley Tower is a tower that's out here on Prince William Road, up south. Uh, where there used to be a little town called Harley, right there, and so somehow that has continued on down to being that that's the Harley Tower. Who owns it anyway?
Um, the land is owned by a local farmer, I'm not sure who owns the site, we just lease it from American Tower.
Now, there's another tower on South, that it's owned from McCain property. It probably, I don't know. I mean, that's not the only tower in the area, but it may very well be the most economical thing for the people to kind of develop a tower. I don't know how expensive it is to maintain, that's all I like to.
Right, and that's, I mean, now would be, if we continue with the next five years, now would be a good time to start those.
And it'll take us a couple of years to get it all sorted out, or at least a year.
You can use some of the other money for, if you have to.
Sure you could.
Anything to help them, you know, for those of you who don't know, that tower helps our emergency services. When that goes down, they don't have nothing, I mean, they're on their own. But to me, this is, uh, I'm, I'm a hundred percent behind my emergency services to support them. I think this is something we need to look at, maybe possible to do.
Maybe decide we need a higher tower, that's what I left to us. We've always had problems with it, you only hear a bell fire, uh, getting signaled about it, so. Well, Ted, could we ask you to review that?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, jail project, I believe. Welcome back.
Well, thank you very much.
How are you?
I'm doing pretty good, I bet yourself.
Good.
Um, what we have today is the appraisal for the easement. That's a, uh, non-exclusive utility easement, uh, that will supply a frequent jail project. Um, it funds a hundred, I want, um, just across some package, down that side of the road, but, uh, I believe you've all got. Sure, I've got the third copy here.
Right there. Nice big background.
Wow.
Yeah, a lot of information. Um, we're ready to present the offers as soon as, uh, you guys, uh, approve the appraisal on key, unless you want to get another one, that's your prerogative as well. It is, uh, did come in under twenty-five thousand, so you're not required to have, which is the one appraisal.
Okay, Ron, explain this whole thing to me better. We're getting, this appraisal is for.
It's for easement, it's for a non-exclusive utility easement, so that's be able to put utilities to the jail site.
So it'd be the water sewage, the line.
Right, whatever.
And others could use that easement, gas lines, or somebody else could use that easement?
Well, technically, no. I mean, it's not exclusive, but I guess they, they could occupy it, but, um, they would still have to approach the property owner, um, to acquire rights to do so. And they would also have to have your permission if they're not a public utility.
Okay.
So like somebody developed up there, they have one of those, to ask us to hook you in on that thing?
Correct.
Okay, and for this easement, are we going to be paying like an annual fee for that easement?
No, no, this is a perpetual easement, it's one-time fee that you got in front of you. Um, they, uh, uh, essentially it runs with the land, so even if they sold them in, um, the county has that movement.
Okay, so you are asking us to do what?
I have to approve the appraisal.
To approve, to approve payment for the, through?
Right, basically if, uh, you're approving us to go ahead and make the offer to the property owner, using that, that appraisal of that.
Hey, Ted, have you looked at this?
I haven't, no, I'm sorry. I just got it, that's, uh, over the weekend, from the appraisers, so I have to make sure that I got it, I can email you a pop.
Well, I can, man, I'll be, the old fashioned way.
Did we ever get a hold of the name of the order, or did we ever have a hold of it?
It's, uh, yeah, it's somebody from Kansas, um, who actually owns it, so, um, we're just gonna have to, we got to, so.
And we haven't done that yet, they give.
No, no, we, we can't, we can't do that until it's actually approved.
I think going to school in Kansas State, I don't know if I trust anybody in Kansas.
I wish we had a table to help Ted review the contract and go on it for next meeting.
I'll give you that.
Sure, that's fine.
And is that all right with you?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, good to see you, Ron.
You too, thanks, Ron.
Will we really need a motion on that, or can you just set aside, uh, table here?
Uh, you know, with the motion, we can just have Beth put it on the agenda.
Okay, that all right with you?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else we need to cover under this term? Couple minute breaks right here now. One of you, this, that one seems like. Steve gets back, we'll be, back in session.
Cause they're getting ready to.
Counting for like.
No.
You know, when I got there, it's like, oh, hell, not Houston, Houston. Well, I ended up, I came by, and I remember going to one place, I had to do a U-turn to get back to it.
We are ready to resume, and, uh, we're ready for EMA Director Mike Spencer.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
We gotta hear your call.
Okay.
Good morning, gentlemen. Uh, just a couple of things I wanted to hit real quick. First, I'd like to do a, a, uh, another, that executive session with that court security committee, Mr. Brown. Uh, basically a court, the court of just you, me, and the sheriff to go over the propositions that I sent you guys a while back. And then once we make a determination on which way you wanna go, we can pull the judges back in and start building this program. If we're gonna move forward with it, or if we're gonna scrap it.
That's fair. Uh, so you, you would like to have a, an executive session with all of us?
Well, just, it, that court group, the court security.
Okay, well, then it doesn't need to be.
And then, that's me, it's just a session of you.
Right, so, uh, do you have a time to figure, do that?
I was gonna go off to your schedule, and the sheriff just stepped out, so off of his schedule.
Friday is, or that's what he's talking about.
A lot of Fridays.
I mean, if it's strategy in respect to implementing security system, it can, it can be an executive session.
It could be, yes, if, if you wanted to share, or if you wanted to just present it to all three of us, and if they wanted to do it, I don't.
But sure, we, we just, we gotta do some movement on it. I've got nine hundred things on my plate, and this is one of them, and we either gotta move on it, or scrap it, or, you know, I, I just need to know where we're going, if I have to.
And what's the pleasure of you two gentlemen? Do you wanna have another executive session, or do you want me to sit down and inform you during a public meeting of what's going on?
I mean, you can just, I mean, I mean, fifteen years, it's got a little bit.
It's long, it's not six feet.
It'll be talking about how we're gonna implement, should we decide to implement court security, which would be, so it's not a, a meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
If people relate you.
It just, it just wouldn't be, uh, noticed as an executive session, it'd just be one commissioner meeting privately, with the director and whoever.
The sheriff.
Yeah, sheriff. Uh, I mean, within, just me without my two cohorts, we have to. No, no, no notice is required, you know, you, you have to set the time, you can set the time if you wish, but it's not, it would be, it wouldn't be a charge anyway, so it doesn't require notification immediately. I myself do not care a bit, or if you're, but just, uh, I relate it in public to these two, or whether they want to join in on it, I don't care.
But Ted?
Do you wanna be in on it anymore?
No, I can talk if you still market anytime.
You can fill us in after.
Okay.
So I, so any day but Friday for you, I'll get with the sheriff, see if he's got anything next week, I'll pull my calendar out, but.
So there's no notice, and there's no, it's not a public meeting. Is that what you're telling me?
Correct.
All right, so I wanted to bring up the Camden property again to see if there's gonna be any movement on this, or if that's just something that needs to go away. The reason I'm bringing it up again, and I was gonna bring it up anyway today, but over the weekend, there was three deaths in the county. Uh, and I don't have all the details on any of them, I just know there was three deaths, they all happened within an hour of each of.
Within an hour, we had three deaths?
Yes. And that, so with not having an active ward, I had called the coroner to see what assistance she needed from me, if any, on looking for locations, uh, for the bodies, until the, once it needed to be autopsied or autopsied, uh.
Do we have a trailer for that now?
No.
I have to have the trailer.
I didn't accept the trailer because we don't have storage for it. And that's why I was bringing it up.
So where is the, the trailer?
The trailer's set in Lafayette with FEMA, with, to the new county's emergency management agency.
So the trailer, there's a license, no use to us, so.
Well, I, it was decided not to call that trailer out for the three deaths. We were able to, to, uh, their pathologist, that she uses.